The advertised public hearing, the church community development block, I can't believe you're still here. 2017 grant application, second hearing, first hearing held November 27th, 2017, community development and housing needs and program performance. Provide $100,000 funding for the acquisition and rehab of 63 Restful Valley Road that would be resold to an affordable buyer under CCHC's land trust program. A council approval to file application. Welcome. And I'm sorry you had to stay so long.
Good evening. My name is Sam Schuford with Church Community Housing Corporation. So this is the second hearing for the CDBG program. The first hearing was held November 27th. So this is for an affordable housing application. The annual application will be held probably later this, in April. And so this is just the council approval to move forward with an application for this project at 63 Restful Valley.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
It says under a council approval to file, oh, I'm sorry. I thought it said council approval on file for application.
No.
Oh, I'm getting tired. Never mind.
Okay, so you all have your stuff in front of you?
Hold on one second.
This is going back up to what's only the advertising.
Yeah, that's amount of $100,000.
So this would be the town putting up 100 grand?
No.
This is federal funds that come into the state.
We just administer them for you?
Yes.
Okay.
They come through, yes.
Called free money.
At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything? Any, oh, thank God. Anyone from the public would like to say anything? Come on, why don't you say something? Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
I'd like to close the public hearing, by the way.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for CCHC's land trust program for whatever issue you have here. Second.
Amount of $100,000.
Amount of $100,000.
I have a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted, so the amount of the $100,000, is that something that, that's going to take care of the rehabilitation for that? Or is you think you're gonna, that's part of one part?
That's part of the acquisition.
Okay.
So it's a...
It's not all of it?
Correct.
Okay. So you would come and try to get more funds? Is that what you're trying to do?
No. So the house will be sold to a, an inquiry, an income qualified homeowner.
Okay.
And then those funds would be used to, for the rehab and such, the remainder of the development.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Against? So six, one. Thank you. Cultural Survival Cambridge Mass requests approval of sound variance. It was, it was six and Joan wasn't up.
This is that HUD money thing, right?
Yes.
No money is free.
All right, Cultural Survival Cambridge Mass requests approval of sound variance for Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tivon and Four Corners Art Center, 3852 Main Road, July 28th through the 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Hi, I'm Jess Trofsky. I work with Cultural Survival, a nonprofit based in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And we are planning to hold our 18th Annual Cultural Survival Bazaar at the Four Corners Art Center on July 28th and 29th. And we will have live music. The event runs from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We do this yearly and haven't had a problem with the music that I know of. We keep it at a level where vendors can regularly communicate with their customers, so it's not too loud.
Last year, I remember, we had police presence. Am I right, Captain Jones?
Yeah.
Chief Jones?
Chief Jones, Captain Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam President, we did.
And we will again this time.
Yes, if necessary, we absolutely will.
Because I think that...
I think we usually communicate.
Yeah, I think, I think traffic was an issue at some point. Yeah, okay.
Roads are always an issue in this town.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do I, anyone from the public like to speak?
They're all at the left.
If you could help me a little longer, I'd be glad.
Anyone from the public like to speak? I'll close the public hearing and entertain the motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sound variance for Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tivon and Four Corners Art Center, 3852 Main Road, for July 28th through July 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on each day.
Second. Motion's been made. Joan seconded.
That's also going to include, subject to all legal requirements.
Subject.
I'm going to require something from the police chief that we have not received yet.
That's right. I also need...
Well, they're subject to all meeting all legal, that's the licensing.
That's the licensing.
Yeah, this is just the sound, the sound variance.
That's the next one.
It's not good.
You're catching me off balance.
I did communicate with your clerk today that we don't have any objection. The only other issue would be if there's a tent. I know you have to have it inspected by the fire department.
Correct.
Okay.
But that'll be in the licensing.
There is a tent.
That's the next item.
I think, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now that I've been interrupted by the clerk, we'll have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Of course, we sit here.
All right, so the next thing is Cultural Survival Cambridge Mass requests approval for special event permit for Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tivon and Four Corners Art Center, 3852 Main Road, July 28th through 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
Not to cut you off, but I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the special event permit for Cultural Survival, Survival Bazaar at Tivon and Four Corners, 3852 Main Road, for July 28th through July, all right, through July 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. both days, subject, Madam Clerk, to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Reverend William Sterrett.
So I have about six papers.
Sit down. Reverend William Sterrett.
Don't put us any papers.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just vote right now. All right.
Bill Sterrett, Amicable Church.
Well, wait a minute, let me see this stuff. Request permission to hold annual 5K race and family walk on Saturday, June 28th, starting at 30, 23rd, starting at 8:30 a.m. from Four Corners Neck Road, west on Neck Road to Sepala, north to Bridge, turnaround and return, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Would you like to say something, Reverend?
I'd like to say that I think that tonight was punishment for me, so I apologize to you, because last year, when I came to get approved, I arrived late, you know, 20 minutes after 7:00, and you'd already approved it.
Yeah.
So I showed up at 7:00 o'clock today, this evening, so that I could be here, to be here.
This is the annual, annual event they run every year. Make a motion.
Welcome to Tivon.
So I apologize that you have to sit through what just happened.
I hope you do pray for us, okay.
Well, I pray for, and this has nothing to do with the race, because the town of Tivon has always been supportive of the Amicable Church in lots of different ways, and I'm very grateful for that. The church is grateful for that. But I will pray for you, because what I just witnessed now for an hour and a half, you've got a tough decision.
And this is light.
Thank you.
That's a tough decision. It really is, because if I was a neighbor, it would annoy me.
All right.
That public hearing's going to close, Reverend.
I make a motion, can we grant permission?
So I make a motion.
For the road race, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? There you go.
Congratulations.
I did talk to Chief...
Go say a prayer for us, quickly.
Oh, oh my, I've been praying for you.
Lynn's...
I'm out of here though.
Bye, thank you.
Unless you want a sermon, I can work on it.
Okay.
I think we had one already.
We had it, we had several.
We had quite a few tonight.
You've got two minutes.
Lynn's Kitchen, E, DBA China Sea, 5 Main Road, request renewal of victoring license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for Lynn's Kitchen Incorporated, DBA China Sea, 5 Main Road, to approve their renewal of their victoring license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, Madam Clerk.
Second, question.
Yes, discussion.
Yeah, I was going to say, they didn't, this didn't come before us when we renewed all the license before.
I have to tell you.
Did they pay a penalty?
They got a late fee.
Oh, okay, that's what I mean.
They have not come to us with this. They've been warned in several occasions.
Okay. And I remember bringing it up the last time they approved everything. I didn't see it. All right. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Motion in the main, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Appointments and resignations. Reappointment of Tyler Loomis, 89, John Dugan Road, as harbor master, March 2018 to 2019, annual appointment with Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission, recommendation.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm going to jump the gun here and go ahead and make a motion to reappoint Tyler Loomis, 89, John Dugan Road, as harbor master from March 2018 to 2019.
I'll second it.
That's it.
Well deserved.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Trish was voting before I said it. Town administrator, approval of appointment of special temporary planner and zoning official relative to the Four Corners Property LLC, Edward Pimentel.
Madam President, I'm going to recuse on this, because I'm recused on all these matters.
Yes.
Madam President.
Wait, I think Jan might want to say...
Do you want to talk, Jan?
Yeah.
I'm just going to give it to you.
Not really, but just for the record, this is to enter into an agreement with Mr. Ed Pimentel, who already has been assisting on this matter, and now would continue to do that, but would be specifically designated as authorized to make certain decisions and sign off on certain decisions.
Madam President.
I have been working on this, as everyone who's been involved knows. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of special temporary planner and zoning official relative to Four Corners Property LLC, Ed Pimentel.
Second, but I'm...
Discussion.
I'm going to ask Joan to begin the motion. Just for, just to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, it should, I think it should be Four Corners Properties and Main Road Properties, because those are the two or business.
I accept the amendment.
They're separate.
Do I have a second to this amendment? Who said, yeah, Trish seconded.
I seconded.
We're good. Love it.
Motion's been in second. Any further discussion?
I just have one quick question. Is that legal to do that, just to change it on here? Yeah, okay, then I second. I mean, I'm with you. I don't know what the rule is on that. You see?
Motion's been made in second. We're getting really bad right now. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Okay.
Beautiful. Tony, you can come back now.
DBW Director Anderson requests approval of $5,000 transfer from account 54406451. Snow removal to account 55405104, overtime.
I'm going to cut you off, if that's all right.
No, I just, I want to, I want to say I have expert witnesses. I'd like to call if you want.
Madam President, in light of, in light of Mr. Anderson's threat to bring in expert witnesses, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $5,000 transfer from account 55406451, snow removal, to account 55405104, overtime. Hopefully, this is the last time we're going to move money to overtime.
For snow anyway.
Yeah, this is snow.
It might be for wind and tree damage.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Tax assessor, this quick and, David Robb, update on 2017 statistical feedback. Now, you're giving us an update, and then I think a couple of us have some questions.
That's all well and good. So I'm not sure if all of you are aware that we had a revaluation or not.
Oh, yeah, we're aware.
Don't you worry about that.
My phone never stopped ringing.
So, yes, tonight's presentation was just to give you an update, but I will be happy to answer any specific questions that you have regarding the revaluation and the notices that got mailed, and any concerns that you may have via three-year residence. And I do apologize, I wish that I was able to bring an update to you prior to the notices being mailed, but just because of timing and such, it just didn't work out that way. So that's why I did send off that email to you, just to give you a heads up that the notices were mailed, and these are kind of the questions that you can expect. The main question is always, or not a question, but the majority of people, when they receive their notices, they immediately calculate their taxes based on the new value with the current tax rate, and that just always gives a very wrong answer. But you can say that every single time you do a revaluation, it's just always done. So it is what it is, but the information is up on our website. It does explain the process, and it also explains not to calculate your new value with current tax rate. When we do these revaluations, and there is an increase, especially an increase that we're taking a look at, the tax rate is always going to go down, it's just dependent upon what the final number of valuation comes out to be, and also part of the budget process.
Give us a preview.
Now, the, the tax rate is going to come down, but that doesn't mean individual taxes are going to come down.
No, it doesn't.
And I've been doing some calculations with people who are calling me, and what's concerning me is the small ranches in North Tivon, these people are going to have increases of 400 to 600,000 dollars some of them.
Sure, some of them will.
And, and...
400 to 600,000?
400 to 600 a year.
Oh, okay.
Which, 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 I'm sorry, I'm really tired. Which, to the people that are being targeted here with this, they can't afford that. And I understand that for some reason, ranches are very marketable right now, and that's why those increases went up. But this is going to put quite the burden on some of these people, especially in the North End. When people in the South End, if you calculate their taxes, they're not going up.
Right.
They're going down, some of them.
They're going down.
Well, their taxes are going down.
So I feel bad that the people with the bigger houses are not going to pay the increase that the people with the smaller houses are. And I talked to Tony about this, like, as a council, what could we do about this? And he, he gave a couple of, Tony, if you want to tell the council what you told me, and this is just an option.
Well, I can tell you, in the town of Barrington, a few years ago, I know Dave is familiar with this, there were some issues with the revaluation. What the town ended up doing was, the town council ended up requesting legislation from the General Assembly, allowing the old valuations to be used until they could repair the issues that happened in that particular revaluation. The purpose of assessments for real estate taxes is to make sure that taxpayers are paying relatively their fair amount of the taxes for the town. And if there are skews in the valuations that make it that some taxpayers are paying more relatively than others, that's where the issues come in. So is there options for the town? Yes, there are. Basically, it would be to use the old valuations. Tax rate would be based on that. Until such time, if there needs to be repairs to the assessments, they could be had. And I know Dave is familiar with that, that happened in Barrington, there was just a lot of issues.
How quickly can we turn that around?
No, I don't know if we want to do that right now, if we want to wait as we go through this budget.
No.
No, what?
Don, don.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think Tony is correct that that can be done and had to be done in Barrington. However, I think the issue is whether the assessment has been done right. If so, it stands. And then the question is, what are you going to do about the tax rate? They're not one and the same thing. We shouldn't jump to conclusions that somehow these people haven't done the assessment in the correct way. But the assessment is also not entirely final yet, so we ought to wait for the outcome of that. And we can question the tax assessor, as well as the assessment people, on their methodology if need be, in particular with, you know, examples, how come this, how come that? That's different from them deciding how the tax rate should be set, and to what extent you want to mitigate an increase in, in that tax.
All right, and that's why Jan's completely accurate in that. And just to back up to a couple of things, we kind of get into a dangerous situation when we start saying that certain properties are targeted. They're not targeted.
Well, I didn't think targeted.
It's, yeah.
You did, several times.
It's what the market is dictating, which isn't me.
Well, I didn't mean it as a negative.
It isn't you, it's, it's all of us. It's what, it's what the market is doing. In the Barrington case, I actually sat in a lot of those hearings that were open to the public, and there were numerous issues with the methodology, and there was glaring errors. I mean, there was one dead-end street where the values fluctuated from, you know, 10% to 120%, and there were basically, that cul-de-sac, the houses were identical. So when you have those kind of errors, those are the things where, Tony's correct, you can go to the General Assembly and look for a delay of phasing in, phasing in those numbers. At this point in time, you have to keep in mind that, you know, people are kind of used to the last couple of years, their property assessments have been pretty level, and the market's been pretty level, prior to 2014. 2014, you saw the scene, a bit of a tick in the market heading up. Last year, some of the statistics show that there's a 15% increase across Rhode Island in the market values of properties. So property values are going up. As far as the ranch homes are concerned, yes, it's, it's been something where, one of the data collectors that actually works for Vision, I play golf with, and three years ago, he mentioned to me they were working on Lincoln or Cumberland, that the ranches are seeing a greater rate of appreciation than Capes and Colonials. And I know that that can happen, but dependent on the style of home and the flavor of the week, but the ranches were, he was saying double-digit, or double-digit appreciation. In the market, that was seen like a 3%, 4% at that point in time. So it was really interesting, so I did do some research on the ranch homes, and sure enough, I mean, there's plenty of literature that you can search through Google or websites, and find out that ranch homes are really becoming the hot ticket item in the market. So they are driving up the values. The values on ranch homes and Colonials and Capes and Conventionals and contemporaries, they're pretty much even across the board, whether or not you want to take a look at North Tivon or South Tivon. The difference between North and South is the amount of land people have. So in the small pockets, when you have a 4,000 square foot lot, and the value of your home is almost equal, if not greater than the value of the land, those type of increases, when we're taking a look at a style of a house, is going to have a much greater impact when you have a lesser percentage of the improvement of the overall assessment when you have six acres of land. So if the land says equal, and the only, the only thing increasing is the style of home, they can increase 15% across the board. But it's because of land value, there's differences. Those are the factors, that's, that's part of it. So when you're talking about these errors or such, at this point in time, we, we've had four eyeballs on this project. There are standards that, the state mandates that we utilize, which are the International, International Association of Assessment Offices, there is standards on ratio studies, on mass appraisal, we meet all of those. And when you take a look at sales ratio studies, that's basically taking the sale price divided by the assessment and making sure it's within a certain range, and then you further compare that to other assessment ratios, you want to be, they call it a COD, for lack of a better phrase and explanation, you want to be within a 10% range of all properties. We're well within that 10%. We're well within, we're actually dead on, as far as what they call a PRD, which is the price difference between the low-end assessment and the higher-end assessment property. They, the IAA standard is anywhere between 98 and 103. We're on 100, we're right in the middle. So all of our statistics prove that this evaluation is fine. It's just a matter of now the sticker shock, and yes, some people are going to have greater increases, but that's the reason for revaluations. You know, it might be the ranches in North Tivon this time, it might be waterfront properties the next time. So, you know, we're trying to do the fair thing, but again, it's not Vision coming up with the numbers or myself, it's what the market's dictating. And even talking to several real estate agents in town, they're well aware that the northern part of town, which have the lower market value properties, are much more attractive. You have first-time home buyers again coming back into the market, you have low interest rates, you have people who lost their homes several years ago because of being underwater and such, they're coming back into the marketplace, they're not buying the 400 or 500,000 dollar homes, they're buying the 200. So as that market dries up, and right now, everyone knows it's a sell-as-market, because the inventory is so low, because soon as something comes on the market, it's sold. You don't have that necessarily in Southern Tivon. So when you have, you know, thoughts that there's a flaw with the process, the process is still going on, that's part of the reason why we have these informal hearings. The company gets paid for this part of the process. So if there is an issue with a style of home, land pricing, anything, this is the time that people should go to the revaluation company, and then they'll make any type of adjustment if need be. You know, we have a whole range of people coming in with truly legitimate issues, to people saying, I could never get that for my house. Well, what do you think it's worth? I don't know. Well, then how do you know? That's not the number. So, you know, we try to work with them as much as possible, and when we do show them that this is exactly what the market's doing, people aren't happy. You know, no one's happy paying taxes, but they understand that if we truly have the sales behind our numbers, and we do, then when they go to these hearings and it's outlayed to them that, you know, this ranch house right behind you sold for this price, which is similar to yours, people kind of get it. Are there mistakes in the system? Absolutely. And that's part of the reason why we have these informal hearings. It's all part of the process. Once they go through this process, we'll sit down with the revaluation company again, we'll reanalyze if there was any type of trends out of the informal hearings, and we'll make the adjustments if need be. But I think at the end of the day, you know, it always comes down to taxes, and what you're ultimately going to pay. And even though we do explain that you should be utilizing a projected tax rate, that tax rate's also, you know, kind of conservative. I don't want to be the guy to come on in and say, okay, the tax rate's going to be, let's just use round numbers, $16, the values end up being less than what I think, and now all of a sudden the tax rate's $16.50. You know, everyone's going to be like, what the heck?
What's your conservative number?
Right now, I think on the sheet, it's 1713, but the reality is probably going to come in less than that. How much so? I have no idea. Again, it's all part of this process. When you all get your notices, I'm basically getting that data at the same time, you know, because we're on a very tight schedule, they're analyzing sales right up to December 31st. So, you know, there's, there's another month or so of number crunching, I sit down and talk with them, but nothing's really finalized that almost all your notices go out. So as those notices go out, I'm reviewing everything just as much as you guys are. You know, I have a spreadsheet of every single property, up, down, all around, and, you know, some numbers jump out at me, I'm like, okay, I have to further investigate it. But when people take a look at just a spreadsheet of why, simply look at the percentages going up or down, there's a lot of rationale and reasoning why someone's assessment's going to change more dramatically than someone else. You know, we get it a lot of times, you know, did he do anything to the house? Take a look at your permit information. And come, oh, yeah, I put on new windows and a new roof, so that has effect on market And come, "Oh yeah, I put on new windows and a new roof," so that has effect on market value. You know, you go from an average-conditioned house to a good-conditioned house, you're going to have a greater rate of increase than your neighbor who did nothing but has an identical house. You know, so there's a whole bunch of factors that go into these things, we're well aware of it, it's not my first time on the rodeo, so we go through the whole entire process, and then at the end, if people still think that there's errors in the system, you know, I'm always more than welcome and open to, you know, taking any type of criticism or reanalysis of it, but I think right now is still a bit premature.
Chris, did you want to ask something?
I have some questions today.
Sure.
So, overall, did I hear that you think that the overall increase is around 16% in the value?
In total values, and that's taken, you know, the range from...
Right, from everything.
From everything.
So, in that, I mean, Balk, and I'm not going to ask you to hold this, but sort of ballpark, in that hot market, which it clearly seems to be that that market has recovered more than some of the other markets in Tiverton, you know, if you were going to ballpark the increase there, I mean, are those folks in general sort of like looking at 20%, 25%? What's the, I mean, not the outlier on the high end, but what's the block on the high end?
Northern Tiverton, those residents are probably going to be seeing somewhere around the 20%, 22%.
Okay.
Once everything gets flushed out.
So, and, just because I was bored and I had some time, I dumped all of the sales out of Vision Appraisals since last November, because I wanted to see what the sales looked like compared to that. And I have to admit, almost across the board, everything that's sold has traded at higher than the new appraisal. I mean, for as much upset as there is so clearly that...
Right.
But the bulk of everything that's trading and the real, the market where there's the most statistics does happen to be in the north end. So, the one question I had about the other part, and just so I understand this, and I know that there's a lot of data that Vision Appraisal has, and they're much smarter than I am, but, you know, living in the south end, it's hard, having bought and sold a couple of houses and refinancing things, it's hard to get comps in the south end the way it is in the north end, because the north end, there's more similar things and there's more volume, so it's easier to comp it. And the south end, sometimes it gets really hard because nothing is like something else, and the volume's so much lower, and it still seems like the volume is lower still compared to, I mean, that market just hasn't come back the way. So, you know, how is the, how do they comp that? How do they do that to try and make sure that my part of town is also having our fair share of the...
All right. So, again, when we do these sales ratio studies, we do them by neighborhoods. So, every neighborhood and every plat map individually is run through these ratio studies. So, when we take a look at all the neighborhoods, they're all falling in with that 10%, so we have a high confidence level. Your point being, though, about the low availability of comparables is a challenge for us and is a challenge for an appraiser, but we're kind of, you know, held into this box of what we have as far as data is concerned. So, if we have X number of valid sales, that's the data we have to use. We do take a look at market trends and what's being offered in MLS and seeing what the asking prices are versus our assessments, but in the end of the day, we have to use what's actually taking place. So, you might have your house up for sale for $700,000, but, you know, your house is only worth half a million, so your house is going to sit there forever and ever. So, you would have an appraiser come on out and he's faced with the same challenges, he takes a look at valid sales. If you have a very limited number of sales in any given area, Southern Tiverton or wherever, you can only use what's available to you. So, it's very difficult to comp out, but even when you do have a low sample size, if you have enough to make your statistics analysis reasonable, that's what we have to hang our hat on. We can't hang our hat on, well, we think it might do this. And when you talk about the current market activity versus the assessments, we are mandated by state statute to assess at fair market value, so it's an estimate. So, when we do these analyses, you know, we're probably trying to get not to 100, maybe 96%, 97% confidence level of the assessment ratios, only for the fact that if we were to try to really bump up against that 100, we know just because of the nature of these mass appraisals, there are going to be a number of people over-assessed. So, the closer we try to get to 100, the more people will over-assess. We don't want that.
So, here's my last...
All right.
One more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, here's my last question, and that is, you know, I mean, obviously, some people are really kind of, right now, even using the potential new rate of somewhere in the low 17s, I mean, there's some serious sticker shock here about increases, and I've heard from people who are, who are in, you know, the north end of town, who are looking at, you know, four, five, six, eight, even nine, you know, hundred dollar increase.
Sure.
And of that group, the folks that I'm the most worried about are, you know, the seniors on really fixed incomes, who, you know, have been in those houses for forever. Are there any options available to us to try and smooth this for them? I mean, I know there are programs if you income qualify, but if you're kind of above that, is there anything we can do to try and smooth this so that they're not looking at, you know, potentially $900 increase in one year on a...
Well, unfortunately, there are programs and there are things that you can do, but most of that would require General Assembly approval, so I'm not sure how late in the game it would be to try to work on something like that.
Just kidding.
Tony, I'm correct on that, right? We do need General Assembly, you can't just simply do a local ordinance.
That's correct, yes.
So, you have that kind of timeframe. But there are communities, if this is something that you want to explore in the future, they are tax freezes, tax deferments, you know, there's different types of programs that you can do for elderly...
Homestead exemptions.
Homestead exemptions. One thing also that you could do, and I'm not sure the way that the statutes are written right now, but you can, I think you can, there is a statute that allows you to split your tax rates, so you could potentially have a higher commercial rate, which would offset the residential.
That's a potential.
That's possible.
There'll be none of that.
But, and someone did mention that also to me, and we were kind of talking about it, but...
Randy, talk to Mark Russo.
There's a few people that have...
Right, but Tiverton has, you know, roughly 15%, 16%, 17% commercial base, so it's not a very big base. So, you know, even if you have this offsetting type of tax rate situation, I'm not sure how much relief, I mean, there would be definitely some relief, it's just a matter of how much, and is it really worth, for lack of a better phrase, penalizing commercial property, you know, just because of a revaluation? And these things, I mean, this is nothing new, where there's upset and confusion and all of that, but that's why the state went from a 10-year cycle to a 3-year cycle, to try to alleviate, alleviate some of these issues. But when you have a market that we had back in '04, '05, and '06, and kind of something similar now, where there's nothing on, you know, as soon as, like I said, as soon as you put something on the market, it's sold. So, the inventory's very low, so it's a sellers market, prices are increasing, and if it's happens to be a certain pocket, it's a certain pocket.
So, but I mean, in two months, we have a lot of seniors on fixed incomes who can't pay their, I mean, is there something we can start and put in place or do so that we don't have older folks who, you know, it's a choice between, either I buy my bills or I pay my taxes?
We're running out of time, but let me make a, I don't mean tonight, I mean, running out of time, because this is all driven by the General Assembly.
Yeah.
I think what we should do is, I'll work with the administrator, the assessor, and solicitor, and see if we just can't give you some options that could be implemented. But whatever you're going to do in this situation, I got to go to the General Assembly.
Right, but...
That's what I was getting at.
Unless it's already here.
Right, but the exception would be that, when we amended our senior low income, and it still would be those people that qualify, we did change it from having to go to the General Assembly for these changes, to allowing us amend our local ordinance. So, we could amend the local ordinance as far as how that program is currently structured, but to expand beyond that, we would have to go through the General Assembly.
That's correct, and I think what you do is, you're going to need a report on that so you know what the options are.
Okay. All right.
Crunch the numbers.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you all.
All right, so number two is an add-on, appoint temporary building official. Jan?
Thank you, and I apologize for having to do this at the last minute, but I think it's for good reasons. This has to do with the situation where we don't have, or where we will have vacancies in both planning and the building office, and that puts into question the ability to assure people who need approvals, what have you, inspections. And so, there's a desire to get some people in there before both offices have the vacancy, or at least as soon as possible thereafter, so that municipal services can actually continue. And what we can do in the interim is enter into a contract with a company that is one of two that the state building official had recommended, the other one being Fourleaf, and Fourleaf is already doing this casino, and it might be best not to mix that up with other building official types of services. The entity that we're looking at is a Massachusetts entity, but they have Rhode Island certified people on staff who can provide assistance in the areas of planning, zoning, plan review, building permits, et cetera, et cetera. And I've spoken with them, I have an initial overview of their qualifications, I also have an initial proposal that needs a little bit of work. The question I have is whether the council might be willing to authorize me to further develop that contract together with the solicitor. And then, I can read this, I just quickly wrote it out, it's a little long, but I think it may need to be long so that you don't approve more than you have to, so. Give me a chance to read this, I will, if I can find it. So, the request is to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract with Municipal Code Consulting LLC for temporary building code, planning, and zoning-related services by Rhode Island certified professionals, so as to ensure continuity of town services pending vacancies in the Land Use Department. Subject to availability of and not to exceed appropriated amounts in planning and building official accounts, and subject to solicitor review and approval of the contract. And then in addition, I would ask that you ask the town clerk to publish a notice of this decision in accordance with guidance that the solicitor can provide.
Sum of it.
Is that a, do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Ananas.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good catch, Jan.
Um, there are requests, there are none. Town administrator announcements, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Council announcements? Anyone? Go ahead. Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Ladies and gentlemen...
I actually have a question for the solicitor. Can I have a question in the comments section?
You go ahead.
So, I am becoming increasingly worried that, that there's another elected body out there that, that you also have to advise, that seems compelled right now to be releasing information via letters to the editor or to the press, that is in conflict with the information that, you know, and the advice that you've given us, and our understanding of the process, as well as, you know, the historical precedent and everything else. And, you know, I suppose as individual counselors, we could all keep writing letters, but my concern is that, at least to this observer, it looks as though the philosophy is, if you just keep saying something long enough and loud enough, that eventually people will start and believe you. So, without asking you necessarily to do this, my question is, in given continued threat of litigation, would it be possible for the council itself to consider drafting a statement that could become a public statement, could be something that we could have as an agreed-upon statement that, you know, defined what we believe the process and our responsibilities are? Or is that not a good idea? Or can you not even advise us on this, since you're advising everybody?
So, so long as it's discussed in an open session, that's something you can do, yes. That's something you can do. It's just a question of what type of information is getting out to the public and whether you feel it's appropriate to make sure that the record is correct in what people are dealing on. You certainly have the right to do that.
Do you, would you be able to look at the letter and see if it's correct?
Well, no, I don't...
Well, you can't do anything like that.
I don't think.
Well, actually, Nancy is elbowing me right now, and I'm getting a black and blue mark over here, by the way, but I've already given a letter on the process.
You have, although your letter is as it should be, written as a legal opinion, and my thought was whether or not some counselors, at least as a draft, and then to bring to the rest of the counselor, might be able to take that letter and rewrite it in a more consumer-friendly way.
No legalese?
No legalese, might be legalese, and then, and then, you know, and then be able to have that as a petition statement or whatever we want to do with it.
It could be just a letter to the editor from the council, this is how we feel things are going, and this is how we think things should be going, and just make a general statement.
But it'd be by vote, it'd be by vote.
Yeah, I mean, not by, not, not, I mean, because we could all do what we want individually, but anyway.
Might I suggest that before we go down the path of just, you know, drafting a letter and singing kumbaya with each other about this, I think what we should be doing is, you know, levying the, or utilizing the investigative and subpoena powers that we have to find out exactly what is going on, before we discuss how they are deviating from the process. I think we should get the actual facts together and do so with the powers as spelled out in the charter.
Okay, we're getting, we're getting... I don't want to go too far off topic, I'm just suggesting.
Well, this is what I'll say, if anyone wants to get together, and you can't do far, if you have a three, you could get together and draft a letter and bring it to the council in a couple of weeks, and meanwhile, if anyone has any other ideas...
I'll put my ideas on the next agenda.
Go ahead.
I would just, I would just like a, I think it would be appropriate to get a status from the town solicitor on the responses, the requests and responses to the Charter Review Commission, to make sure that we are responding to them, because that was the top two items in their, in their letter. I'd like to have that documentation from the town solicitor to, to put some numbers, some information around that, to make sure that we are responding to their, to their requests. And I think if everybody would agree with that.
I would rather not have my name on anything, so you six can do it if you'd like, just keep me out.
Okay. All right, well, go ahead.
I didn't know if you were done or not.
Yeah, do you want me to council announce it? That's what I was going to ask, go ahead.
Eat at Joe's Bar and Grill, no.
Just don't give me that time.
On behalf of the Cemetery Commission, I want to commend DPW Director Bill Anderson and his DPW workers on the great job they did up in the Pecassidale Cemetery. It was supposed to come up at the last meeting and we didn't get around to it, so I just wanted to commend him and his men. Thank you, Bill.
Good job.
Thanks, Bill.
Madam President, I just want to say to the Charter Commission that they know what their job was, that they had to report to the council. They're going to do their part, let them do their part, when it comes to us, we'll do our part. That's why I don't want to be involved with anything else. They know what they got to do, whether they do it right or wrong.
I think they know it.
Well, whatever, they can do whatever they want to do. We were told by the solicitor, it's our job to pick out what goes on for the public to see. That's what we were elected to do, that's our job. Let them do theirs, we'll do ours, so I don't want to be involved with anything other than that.
Any other council announcements? Solicitor announcements? Clerk announcements?
Well, I need you to send a new date for the public hearing that had to be canceled with the...
Okay, let's see, tomorrow night? Friday night? Friday night, good for everybody.
Well, we have to advertise this.
We advertise, right?
Ten days?
So, and that was...
No, 21 days.
21 days?
We're only going to advertise once, but it's 21 days out.
No, I'm sorry, I think it's 14 days. No, it's 21, okay, yeah.
Stop it.
No, no, it's liquor.
I mean, it's cold, but it's cold, yeah. Stagger. All right.
April 25th?
Come on, Joe.
Is that 21 days?
Saying 21 days, I mean, that's just about 21 days, right? What do we have?
I don't know if I can get something tomorrow, tomorrow morning, but I can try.
How about April 30th? That is an off Monday where we don't have a town council meeting.
I will not be here.
April, April 30th, which is an off Monday, it gives you a month.
Fine, I'm not available.
You're not?
From April 28th till May 9th, I'm not available.
Who gets these kind of vacations? Are you kidding me? You're unemployed, I mean, retired.
You can still do it.
They won't make it for the 23rd?
Well, they make it, well, the 23rd is our meeting, so...
25th?
On the 25th?
The 25th.
25th would work if I stay after the meeting at 23. Because I got to get the advertising in 21 days.
Oh, and you count in the weekends?
And if I...
Weekends count.
Yeah.
But if I can't get it in this Thursday, I've got to go to next Thursday, the 5th. I need 21 days, I mean, how you doing?
Yeah, but, but if it's advertised on the 4th, right? That's 21 days?
Well, they wouldn't be advertised this kind of time, because we normally advertise our public hearings.
If you get it in, if you, if you...
See what I mean? If you get it in the 5th, it's...
You get it in by Thursday, you'll have...
Today's the 26th, you should be able to get it in, the... You should be able to get it in the Syconic Times by the 4th.
By when?
The 4th.
April 4th.
That's 21 days.
The paper comes out on the 4th.
Paper comes out on the Wednesday. We always do, yeah. You want to try for that? Okay. They also, because they pay for this. They also had me put it in the Syconic, the, for the Herald and the...
That's what they want you to do, do it.
So, we'd be covered even if that was considered a Thursday.
All right. So, everyone, April 25th, and we'll see if we can get the high school auditorium.
Oh, yeah.
If there's a roof over it.
Before I can advertise too. But that's what I'll shoot for. Also, you have a special meeting on April 16th. Or it's going to be for casino revenue.
You've got to be kidding me.
No, it's a workshop.
It's a workshop on casino revenue. April 16th, you're off Monday. Just tell me no when I will post it.
No, we got to get it done.
I'll be in Nashville.
April what, 16th?
Yeah.
So, on that day... Did I get that down here? You may not care about this, but the Rhode Island Foundation is having its together Rhode Island event in Tiverton. It does these events around the state. So, I don't know to what extent you are interested in...
Which day? The 16th? The 16th?
Yeah, Sandy Woods.
25th.
Oh, the 25th.
25th. Are we not, we no longer do it on the 25th?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
Where the hell'd that meeting go?
It's at Sandy Woods.
When do they, what time?
Well, I know, but we're having a public hearing at 7 o'clock.
I know, but what time is it during the day?
6 o'clock.
Oh, 6.
That's when we go get all the money.
So, how about if we do it 26th, which is Thursday night? Is that okay?
That's okay.
Budget committee.
On the, April 26th?
Don't they have a meeting?
They're going to make, yeah, they should be done by then.
Yeah, but I want to do it in the auditorium because I don't know what people are getting. So, 7 o'clock.
April 26th?
26th.
Is that what we changed it to?
Yeah.
April 26th?
Yes.
That's if I can get this...
That's a Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, I won't be there for that.
Okay. How about the 24th?